The students, part of a leadership class that collected donations for a City Hall sock drive for the homeless, were recognized for their hard work.
They collected over 500 pairs of socks for the needy in the city of Los Angeles. And this is the first leadership class that Michelle Crowe re-energized at Dana Middle School. And that's Dana Middle School. Michelle's my sister, and she and I both attended Dana.
These kids are your future leaders. They're great kids. I'm very proud to be their teacher.
It was the first visit to City Hall for many of the students. Dana Middle School is a magnet school. It started off as a small grassroots gathering for deaf community members, and has now grown into something much larger. An event that educates the public and further strengthens an already tight-knit community. Rasha Goel takes us to this year's Deaf Fest.
L.A. City Hall recently hosted the 15th Annual Deaf Festival L.A., an event that has become the largest of its kind in the nation. The festival aims to provide guidance and resources for deaf and hearing impaired individuals and their families.
And the purpose of Deaf Festival is really just to bring people together who are deaf, deaf-blind, hard of hearing, and also people who can't hear. We want to bring them together so they can exchange some information.
A full day of activities and a variety of information regarding services and the latest technology were available for attendees. Among the exhibitors was a group called Special Spirit, which offers therapy on horseback for those with various disabilities.
We know and discover that horses can help people feel better about themselves. So we use their wisdom to help people gain insight and knowledge about themselves.
One company specializing in telephones showcased a variety of options catering to a variety of needs.
The phones are made in different ways to accommodate hearing loss. They're louder and clearer. We have phones to accommodate vision problems. We have big buttons that talk, or you can dial by voice. If you have trouble getting to the phone, we have phones that clip on. Just sign up with us, CaliforniaPhones.org, and you can get a free application for a free phone.
Kristi Baker, whose son is deaf, drove three hours to get here and says it was worth the drive.
It's really wonderful to see the deaf community getting together and just the different organizations that are there for the deaf community.
A community that's proud of its culture and eager to share it with anyone willing to learn. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Committee members of Deaf Fest L.A. say they hope to see more collaboration between city government and the deaf community. This year's festival was hosted by councilmembers Herb Wesson and Jose Weeza. In this week's list of things to do, a one-day festival celebrating handcrafted goods and mom-and-pop stores, a hike in Runyon Canyon, and the first-ever festival celebrating a famous hot sauce. If you're a fan of Etsy, the online handcrafted marketplace, then check out the One Day Pop-Up Festival taking place at Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles in the beautiful Oceanside community of San Pedro on Saturday, October 26, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The indoor event dubbed "The Mom-and-Pop-Up Shop" is a collaboration between SoCal Etsy Guild and the Crafted Marketplace. You can buy handcrafted one-of-a-kind items as vendors set up shop for just one day. There will also be live music, DJs, beer, and food trucks to satisfy your appetite. Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles is located at 110 East 22nd Street in San Pedro. Go to craftedportla.com. Griffith Park Ranger Ernie Abara will be leading an advanced Runyon Canyon park hike on Saturday, October 26. Meet at 8:00 a.m. at the Mulholland parking lot at 7200 West Mulholland Drive. The cross street is 2600 North Desmond Estate Road. This hike will have very steep up-and-down hills. As with any hike, Ranger Abara reminds participants to dress accordingly, wear hats, sunscreen, and bring water and snacks. And he notes that hikes are always canceled in the event of rain. For more information, email the ranger@ernieabara@lacity.org. If you love Sriracha hot chili sauce, you know the one with the rooster on the bottle, then you won't want to miss the first-ever Sriracha Festival taking place Sunday, October 27, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. It'll be taking place in the Arts District at Lot 613, located at 613 Imperial Street. This all-inclusive 21-over event spotlights the world's most iconic hot sauce by featuring multiple stations that allow guests to enjoy a variety of Sriracha-themed dishes, including desserts. Go to nightout.com/events/LasrirachaFestival for ticket prices and information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Our next story, "You Won't Want to Take Your Eyes Off the Screen." It's truly a sight to behold, especially here in the hustle and bustle of the city. A flock of thousands upon thousands of migratory birds taking refuge in an unlikely place. These tiny dots dancing in formation may look like a swarm of bees from afar, but they're actually a massive flock of Boxer Swifts hovering above the L.A. sky, mesmerizing their captive audience as they prepare to make a stop for the night on their way south for the fall.
They do a bit of like a tease when they're going into the chimney because they fly around a couple times and then they finally just enter into the chimney.
The Boxer Swift is a tiny migratory bird some describe as a cigar with crescent wings. It's migrating from Canada and northern Washington State to southern Mexico and central America.
It's just really interesting how you see all these birds kind of come together. There's a lot of them, and they all kind of just descend into this chimney.
While the concrete jungle of Los Angeles may not be where you imagine migratory birds might take refuge on their long journey, Jeff Chapman of the Audubon Center at Debs Park says our city is more hospitable to wildlife than you might think.
Because of the Los Angeles River, which is a great resource for them, because they eat insects. There's a lot of insects over the river, and they also utilize our urban parks, like Griffith Park, Elysian Park, and Debs Park, as places to forage and find food.
On a recent Saturday, bird lovers as well as curious city slickers joined the Audubon Center atop the roof of Joe's Auto Park at 440 Broadway for the Birds Over Broadway event to catch the spectacle of nature in action across the way at the Spring Arts Building. That building's chimney is where the birds enter en masse at dusk for an evening of rest. And this phenomenon is repeated night after night as other flocks of birds on the same migratory path stay at the same rest stops.
In the heart of downtown, nature's around us and surrounds us, and we can have an impact on nature and the natural world.
And to ensure that the Spring Arts Building remains hospitable to these migrating birds, the Audubon Center reached out to Councilmember Jose Weeza's office for help.
Unfortunately, there was a property owner that kind of cut off the chimney for these birds, over 10,000 of them, that nested here. Through the work of my staff member, Martin, we were able to work with the neighboring property owner that allowed their chimney and access to their property to be used, and the birds automatically went in there.
The city's and the Audubon Center's commitment to protect wildlife has made it possible for these Boxer Swifts to reach their final destination and for Angelenos to take in this awe-inspiring sight smack dab in the middle of the hustle and bustle of downtown life. Jeff Chapman of the Audubon Center says the birds could come through our city as late as late October, depending on how the resources are further to the north. To find out other bird-related activities in our region, you can go to birdla.com. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
What's with all the zombies?
Alert L.A. County takes the surprise out of disasters like zombie attacks. And without surprise, they're out of a job.
Alert L.A. County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Any skills besides flesh-eating? Pick that up.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, safety notices, and if necessary, zombie attacks.
Next.
Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Hi, I'm Jim Hoggatt in Mount Washington. And when I'm not reading a great murder mystery, I'm watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
It's Tuesday, October 22. I'd like to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingford, Bonn, and Buscano, Sadio, England, Dorf, Fuentes, Weeza, Caress, Krikorian, Labans, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Wesson, eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. Weeza moves. Fuentes seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Okay, Krikorian moves. Caress seconds.
Mr. President, say yes Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise and we'll be led in our flag salute by Paul Caress.
Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Caress. What's next on today's agenda, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, first, there is a request by a member to continue Item 24 through tomorrow, October 23.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items one and two are items noted for public hearing. There are cards on Item Two.
Okay, let's hold two members on Item One. Okay, let's prepare then to vote on Item One. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's go through the next section of Agenda Items.
Items three through 15 are items which public hearings have been held.
Have been held?
Yes.
Specials, Mr. Parks?
I'm sorry, can I just go back one step? On 24, we're continuing. I understand that the last day for us to make an appeal is tomorrow.
Is this on which item, 24?
24. This deals with the PUC.
Okay, we just haven't gotten there yet. Give us one.
I thought they said to continue it.
Wait, what? Oh, so now, why don't we do this? Until I find out exactly what's going on, why don't we hold that item? Do we have to go back in order to do that, and then we'll sort out what's going on?
Thank you.
Mr. President, council should reconsider Item 24.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, so that is going to be reconsidered. And so now, more?
Number four.
Number four is held by Mr. Parks. Seeing no other members, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. Where are we now on the agenda?
Items 16 through 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, these items are now before this council. Do we have any cards?
Cards on Items 18, 20, and 22.
Okay, let's hold those items. On the remaining items, specials members. Okay, I don't see any other members in the queue. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, where are we now? Did that bring us to Presentations, or is there more?
No, Mr. President, that's Presentations.
Mr. Labans, are you ready to? Okay, let's start off with our first presentation by Mr. Tom Labans.
Alert L.A. County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Any skills besides flesh-eating? Pick that up.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, safety notices, and if necessary, zombie attacks.
Next.
Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Hi, I'm Jim Hoggatt in Mount Washington. And when I'm not reading a great murder mystery, I'm watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. It's Tuesday, October 22. I'd like to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingford, Bonn, and Buscano, Sadio, England, Dorf, Fuentes, Weeza, Caress, Krikorian, Labans, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Wesson, eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. Weeza moves. Fuentes seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Okay, Krikorian moves. Caress seconds.
Mr. President, say yes Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise and we'll be led in our flag salute by Paul Caress.
Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Caress. What's next on today's agenda, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, first, there is a request by a member to continue Item 24 through tomorrow, October 23.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items one and two are items noted for public hearing. There are cards on Item Two.
Okay, let's hold two members on Item One. Okay, let's prepare then to vote on Item One. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's go through the next section of Agenda Items.
Items three through 15 are items which public hearings have been held.
Have been held?
Yes.
Specials, Mr. Parks?
I'm sorry, can I just go back one step? On 24, we're continuing. I understand that the last day for us to make an appeal is tomorrow.
Is this on which item, 24?
24. This deals with the PUC.
Okay, we just haven't gotten there yet. Give us one.
I thought they said to continue it.
Wait, what? Oh, so now, why don't we do this? Until I find out exactly what's going on, why don't we hold that item? Do we have to go back in order to do that, and then we'll sort out what's going on?
Thank you.
Mr. President, council should reconsider Item 24.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, so that is going to be reconsidered. And so now, more?
Number four.
Number four is held by Mr. Parks. Seeing no other members, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. Where are we now on the agenda?
Items 16 through 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, these items are now before this council. Do we have any cards? Good morning.
Cards on Items 18, 20, and 22.
Okay, let's hold those items. On the remaining items, specials members. Okay, I don't see any other members in the queue. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, where are we now? Did that bring us to Presentations, or is there more?
No, Mr. President, that's Presentations.
Mr. Labans, are you ready to? Okay, let's start off with our first presentation by Mr. Tom Labans.
Mr. President, and for the mayor and all one, I'm very honored to do our Sister City program. I want to have a special, special recognition for someone who came from Bordeaux, France. Lilian Salih. Lilian is right here. Come up here right now quickly, and give him a big hand. Right now, we thank you. This is the 50th anniversary next year of our Sister City relationship, and Los Angeles has been chosen of the city of note where all things Los Angeles will transpire on the shores of the river, right in the heart of Bordeaux. And art will be a big part of it in the exchange, and I thank Olga Garay for her great work from Cultural Affairs. But Lilian is their cultural attache, their ambassador for culture, and we thank you and give an official welcome from our friends from Bordeaux, France.
Thank you very much.
I'll talk to you in a minute. Do you want to say something? No, just say something in French.
Well, thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. Nous sommes très heureux, and we will receive you with great joy this year.
All right, thank you very much. Merci, merci. And now we go all the way around the world to Bangkok, Thailand. And this man right here is the... I wish you could come down because I want you to see... There's Herb, our president, Mr. Wesson. We wanted to greet you before the start of the meeting, but we have a very special delegation here that we want to represent. And I want to ask Kristi, now, Kristi, if you could come here right now. She's the deputy. And Mitchell Farrell, I want you to join me because you represent Thai Town right here. Kristi, come over here on this side because I want you to be a better interpreter than I am. As you know, Mr. President, you've had to correct me a few times. This great man.
This is the... He is the president of the Bangkok Metropolitan Council. His name's Pipat Raptanah.
Yes. And I want to pronounce that correctly. Say it again.
Yes. Pipat Raptanah.
Pipat Raptanah is our great head of the council for Bangkok. You see where I needed help, Mr. President? But we need no help with friendship. We led a delegation just recently to Bangkok as well as to Jakarta, and we thank Mr. Buscano for your great work on the sister port between Jakarta. We work with Bangkok. And all of us came, 29, came this last weekend to Los Angeles. And, Mr. President, would you like to say a few words and address us?
Yes, good morning.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
You're Kristi.
Yes, Kristi. Yes, I guess.
Lieutenant Mr. Herb, Jay Wesson, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America, Mr. Tom Labans, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America, members and guests.
Good morning, everyone, City Council. Thank you for having us here today.
I'm very honored and glad to be here and for you to greet us, all of us, into Los Angeles. The United States of America is a very important country. We have a strong relationship between the United States of America and the United States of China. We are very proud of each other. We are very excited and glad to have this relationship with Bangkok and Los Angeles City. Today, I brought with me the Bangkok Metropolitan Council, many within the Public Relations Division, Bank King District, Bank Rag District, as well as other law enforcement officers with me on this delegation. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to connect with each other. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to connect with each other. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to connect with each other. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I'm very honored and glad to be here and for you to greet us, all of us, into Los Angeles. The United States of America is a very important country. We have a very strong relationship between the United States of America and the United States of China. We are very excited and glad to have this relationship with Bangkok and Los Angeles City. Today, I brought with me the Bangkok Metropolitan Council, many within the Public Relations Division, Bank King District, Bank Rag District, as well as other law enforcement officers with me on this delegation. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to create a stronger bond between the two countries. I hope to build a strong bond between the two countries. I hope to connect with everyone. However, my, the feeling and friendship that I have with the city feels, seems to be much longer than what was just the friendship commitment that we just made in April.
be much longer than what was just the friendship commitment that we just made in April. Since Los Angeles City has over, has so many Thai constituents and Thai people within. And I do hope that this visit will continue our relationship and extend it so that we can be friends for a long time. Mr. President, I must thank you for greeting us and welcoming us to Los Angeles. Especially Mr. Councilmember Tom Labange for greeting us and being so warm. And I hope that the relationship between the two cities will be continued and extended so that we can be friends for a long time. Mr. President, I must thank you for greeting us and welcoming us to Los Angeles. Especially Mr. Tom Labong, who is the Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America, who has helped organize the reception. Especially Mr. Councilmember Tom Labange for greeting us and being so warm. And I hope that the relationship between the two cities will be continued and extended so that we can be friends for a long time. I hope that in the future, we can do a great cultural exchange between art, arts, sports, and much more. The National Council of the United States of America hopes to receive the reception of the National Council of the United States of America. I hope that in the future, we will be able to greet you into Bangkok City and all can come visit. So that we can create a stronger bond between the two cities. And I hope that all of you have a healthy life and success in the coming years. I do hope for everyone to have great health and great success within the time to come. I want to introduce the delegation that has joined me today. First, Neet Lengsi, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. Mr. Kritbol Charchu Kritkun, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. Mr. Sutishai Wila Kun Sunthorn, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America, and Adit, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. Mr. Napaun Jira Kun, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. Mr. Wira Jinchui, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. Mr. Nathwut Mahnulak, Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. Mr. Lenumart Isalap Pak Dhi. And then, the Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America. And then, Mr. Gong Sun, Thai. Good job. Thank you. And then, Mr. Gong Sun, the Chairman of the National Council of the United States of America.
The, Mr., Kun, Kun Jezda...
Jezda.
Has been the main supporter and connector between Los Angeles City and Bangkok, and he is the Thai Consul General of Los Angeles.
He has been the biggest supporter for this term the most. And I am also the head coach of the Thai Basketball Association. I hope that the team LA Leggera is going to play at the National Council of the United States of America.
He wishes and hopes that the Los Angeles Lakers can visit Bangkok.
Currently, Mr. Joe Bryant, father of Kobe Bryant, is the head coach for the Thai basketball team. Just now. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, before, Mr. Labange, before I have another... Oh, well, why don't we go with Mr. O'Farrell, and then I'll turn it to Joe Buscaino. So, Mitch?
Thank you, colleagues, very, very quickly. I just want to thank the delegation for visiting today. Hollywood is home to a thriving, growing Thai community, and I had the great pleasure last week of having breakfast with the Consul General, Mr. Jezza Katavatin, to my left here. He deserves a big round of applause. And I just want to welcome the delegation to Los Angeles City Hall and to Hollywood as well. So, thank you, congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Labange, for making this happen. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labange, for welcoming this delegation from Bangkok. Earlier this year, we celebrated the sister port city relationship between the Port of Los Angeles and Jakarta, Jakarta, that is. And I want to recognize, and Mr. Consul General reminded me, how we have a thriving trade relationship between our respective countries. In fact, in the Port of Los Angeles, we celebrate nearly $10 billion in a movement of goods between the Port of Los Angeles and Jakarta as well, and we want to thank you for that relationship, and thank you for continuing the importance of international trade, as we celebrate the port as being the number-one trade gateway in the country, and we're saying today in this council chambers that it ought to be the international trade gateway for people as well. So, we thank you, we welcome you with open arms, and, Mr. Council President, thank you for joining us here in the John Ferraro Chambers. God bless you.
Mr. President, Mr. Buscaino and his leadership is going to put in a motion for a sister port with Bangkok, Thailand, which is very important. We thank you. And just to let you know, members, Mr. O'Farrell, having his tracksuits on just over three months, has already got a pedestrian crossing, and the revitalization of that abandoned building in Thai Town on the south side of the street, he's doing a great job altogether. And, Mr. Gilmore, our president-chairman of Sister Cities, thank you for leading the delegation. Come poop cop, come poop cop. There we go. All right, we got a picture here.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I just have one question. Do you mind if I bring the president up, because I want a picture of you and him together, two presidents?
I look forward to that, Mr. Labange. So, if we could now turn things over to Mr. Fuentes.
Real quick, just a second. Thank you, Felipe, for all you do, Felipe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of this fantastic council. I'm very, very honored today to stand here with councilmembers Buscaino, where's Mr. Buscaino? And Mr. Bloomingfield, if they'll please join me? And thank you, Ms. Martinez, for helping co-sponsor this event. The four of us here are here to honor with you all Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles for all of their efforts and outreach. Give them a big round of applause. Come on, big round of applause, everybody.
Please give them a big round of applause.
As many of you know, the month of October is nationally recognized as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. The primary mission of the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles is to enhance the welfare of people with Down Syndrome and their families through the development and promotion of education, counseling, employment, and recreational programs. The Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles began in 1975, and it began just with 15 parents of children with Down Syndrome. For over 35 years, the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles has been a resource center supporting close to 2,000 individuals with Down Syndrome and their families. Not only do they advocate at the state and national level, but they also provide members with up-to-date information about Down Syndrome through their website, support groups, trainings, and conferences. It is very meaningful for me to be co-presenting this resolution with my partners on the city council here today, because it gives us a very unique opportunity to recognize a tremendous association that is doing so much with our constituents and this particular association. The efforts of this organization would not have been possible today without the help of some very key people, and I'm going to ask them to say a few words with me here. First is the Director of Administration of the Development of the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles, Jim Hodgson, and I'm going to ask him to say a few words, Jim.
All right, Jim. Thank you for having us. Thank you for acknowledging Down Syndrome Awareness Month. It's the second year this has happened. Thank you so much. It's coming up on this Saturday, we're having our Buddy Walk right here on the South Lawn. It's an important and historic moment for us. For the first time in 37 years since the beginning of the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles, we'll be bringing about 2,000 individuals representing the community living with Down Syndrome to your neighborhood, the South Lawn, as well as Spring Street. I'd like to say a few things really quick. The DSA LA provides support to every geographic area in Greater Los Angeles County, and to each individual, no matter what economic profile they are in. The DSA LA reaches over 50 hospitals with maternity departments. Sorry about this. I'm going to get away from this paper stuff. We've got, I'm so excited about what's transpiring here. We want to build relationships with each and every one of you. In Success at our Buddy Walk, we'd love to have you attend. Again, in Success, we're going to be starting to organize our folks on Buddy Walk Day in districts, so you can come and easily meet those individuals and families that represent our Down Syndrome community, so you can become personally acquainted with each and every one of them. One in every 691 individuals today is born with Down Syndrome. The other name for that is trisomy 21. 691, or one in every 691, isn't a very large number, but I want everyone to understand that around that number, that individual with Down Syndrome is an immense community. One particular team that's attending our Buddy Walk this coming Saturday, there's a young boy named Josh. Around Josh will be a team of family members that constitutes over 110 members surrounding Josh. This is very, this is very symbolic of what goes on in our community. So, again, when you see that individual with Down Syndrome or trisomy 21, know that the concentric circles reaching out are wide and great. I know there's a few folks here from Leachman High School. There are... We have representatives from ARC in North Hollywood. And we have a number of parents, siblings, uncles, aunts, cousins, grandmothers and grandfathers here. Again, these are the, these are the groups that show up at our Buddy Walk every year. Really quick, there are a few folks, I do want everyone to understand that the world of Down Syndrome is expanding. We are, we're very excited at this point in history. There are a few individuals behind me that are, that have made history. Angela and Antoinette are the first two women in the history of the Los Angeles Marathon to complete the Los Angeles Marathon. We also have, for the first time ever, our friend Jimmy, who's part of their running team. Jimmy?
All right, Jimmy.
Jimmy is going to the New York Marathon. He will be the first individual with Down Syndrome to race in the New York Marathon. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is Down Syndrome history behind us. We, every day, we are out expanding, showing the world what, instead of being told what we can't do, we're showing the world what we can do. So, thank you for your time. I'd like to bring in Mr. Fuentes.
All right, I also want to bring up Mark Wallingreen from Coast 103.5. Mark's been doing a fantastic job helping us pump up this event. Again, we're going to tell you more about it. It's going to take place this Saturday, the Buddy Walk right here at City Hall. Mark, come on up.
All right, Mark. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. I have been talking with Angelenos here for 28 years, mornings on the Mark and Christian Show with Coast 103.5. I am standing here before you to tell you how proud I am to be an Angelino and how proud I am to be speaking on behalf of beautiful Angelenos with Down Syndrome. As been mentioned, 1975, this organization was formed by 15 people, and at that time, many families born with a Down Syndrome child were recommending institutionalization. And when you look around here at these kids, we have come a long ways in how we treat Down Syndrome. And that's... There have been some great people in this city, great organizations that have helped make the change, and I would like to include my late brother, Ernie Wallingreen, who was the executive producer of a TV show that was very successful, starting in 1989, called Life Goes On. He was... He was one of the producers that brought on Chris Burke to actually play a Down Syndrome character, a lead character, on a network. And I didn't get involved with Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles until after that, but as I look back at my life and I see how many times somehow Down Syndrome has come into my life, and especially recently, getting to know a wonderful woman by the name of Mary Rings with the Born to Act Players, who has a wonderful class, and it's a nonprofit, and she works with many actors with disabilities and non-actors, I mean, non-disabilities, but she's placed these kids on roles in this great entertainment industry that we have here in this town. On behalf of Coast 103, the Down Syndrome of Greater Los Angeles, and everyone, I urge Los Angeles residents to become a friend of one with Down Syndrome and their families. You are going to discover unconditional love and joy like I have with my neighbors, including a 13-year-old Matthew Vaughn, Dr. A, a 46-year-old Sarah Glasscock, who is part of ARC. Through DSA LA, I've made lifelong friends with Christine Young and her family, and have met a beautiful little girl, Bella, thanks to our morning show intern, Darlene Rodrigo, who is here. Every single one of these people living with Down Syndrome is an inspiration to me and to this fine city, and I am so very grateful to be standing here in front of you on this incredible occasion, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you very much. I want to, first of all, acknowledge the amazing leadership of my colleague, Councilmember Felipe Fuentes, for this beautiful event, and I want to acknowledge a very good friend of mine, Yoli Fuentes Miranda. Where is she? Is she in the back? And I want to just thank her so much. She's way in the back, probably working. I just want to acknowledge and thank Yoli for not only making sure that all of us increase our awareness on Down Syndrome, but all the community effort and the organizing that takes place in the valley, thanks to her efforts and her leadership. And I just want to say that Estelita brings joy to all of our lives. We love you. Thank you very, very much, and congratulations on such a beautiful occasion.
I want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, and certainly in thanking Yoli and thanking Felipe for helping make this possible, thanking all of you who were, who were here. The goal of the Down Syndrome Association, to enhance the welfare of people with Down Syndrome, is so important. I'm really proud, actually, that we've got a group of folks who've taught me a lot about Down Syndrome, who are here from my district. I'm grateful to the staff and the students of the Leachman Special Education Center of Reseda. In fact, some of them are here, maybe you guys could come up, because they, they just brought to me a really nice certificate. Usually, we give certificates, but in this case, they have given this certificate. Come on up, guys. This is, this is from the students of Leachman. It says, "To the members of the Los Angeles City Council, thank you so much for recognizing October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month." I want to thank you guys on behalf of all the council that you're giving this to. Thank you for giving us this wonderful certificate and for being here as part of today's ceremony. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. It's great to co-present this with you and with a number of our colleagues, and I want to recognize, and it was a commitment that I made to now Congressman Tony Cardenas, who led this charge while being here as a council member. And let's give Congressman Tony Cardenas a round of applause for really leading this effort. He's now off to DC, but, and Yolanda, who we committed to continuing this effort in recognizing the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles. And it's with the help of these phenomenal organizations, such as the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles, people with Down Syndrome attend school, they work... People with Down Syndrome attend school, they work, participate in decisions that affect them, and contribute to society in many wonderful ways. In fact, our Toby Higashi and my son and daughter's school will be performing tomorrow in their annual talent show, and Toby has Down Syndrome and has just been such an inspiration to all of the kids at South Shore's Visual Performing Arts Magnet. I want to personally thank the organizations for providing quality educational programs and overall environment that they create for parents and family and friends. And I'm proud to work with Mr. Fuentes and Bloomingfield and co-introducing this resolution. Thank you for being here. I want to introduce—you know, you've heard from the electeds and the members of the organizations, but Jimmy, come on up and say a few words. Let's give Jimmy a round of applause and say a few words. Here's the microphone.
I'm Decker, I'm Kane, and this is my local New York. And I'm proud of me, myself, with all my friends, and honestly, and I care, all my staff. And I care for all my friends, who had to pray for me, so I could thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Jimmy. Good job, buddy. You're proud of you. Mr. Fuentes. Okay, members, so there's information on your desks about the Buddy Walk. The program starts at 11:00 this Saturday. The walk starts at 2:00. And I also want to congratulate and honor my district director and my aunt, Yolanda Fuentes, for helping us put this event together. Yolanda Fuentes-Miranda—I'll get in trouble with my uncle. And of course, my niece with Down Syndrome is Estella. She's beautiful, and she's always the life of the party. Thank you all very much for doing this. Colleagues, thank you for helping us with this event. Thank you very much. All right, we'll take a—
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Okay, we're gonna go to item 18, and that's held special by John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, would you please come forward on item 18? Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Click to J. Walsh Confidential. Okay, this concerns pedestrian transit crossroad phase-one project in Hollywood. It's an old CRA project. Remember the CRA? 1971, I said I'd outlived the CRA in Berkeley, and I did. They're dead. I'm still very much alive. And this project is not ready. The streets are chaotic. The traffic is chaotic in Los Angeles, and I don't think that this pedestrian—pedestrians are treated like trash. In Hollywood, you have four seconds to cross, and then it turns red. Four seconds on Hollywood Boulevard. Check it out. It's been changed. It used to be 10 seconds.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Oh, Mr. Walsh, don't go far. Yeah, we're doing item 20, Mr. Walsh. That was called "Special by You Also." I'm sorry I didn't give you a heads-up a little sooner. Item 20, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The second meter isn't working. Or J. Walsh Confidential. And this is item 20, concerning charter bus service in Council District 8. Now, if you check, Council District 8 is Bernie Parks's district. You're doing a fantastic job, Mr. Parks. Of all these people up here, I think I have insulted you the fewest times, right? And I like the beard. I like the beard. HollywoodHighlands.org. This was my second meeting. Come to the website and say hello to Melrose Larry Green, who's here. Stay tuned. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, stick around. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, on item 22, please come forward.
Mr. President, there's requests to send item 24 with.
4th with.
John Walsh. You can go straight to JWalgeConfidential.wordpress.com. This concerns transit-oriented development, which exists on the same level as the Easter Bunny. You build tall buildings around stations, subway stations and rail stations, and suddenly people magically use the rail. Okay, look at the EIR for the Red Line. It predicted the year 2,300,000 boardings—not passengers, 300,000 boardings. Last year, you were at 150,000 boardings. 13 years late, I'm telling you, and also 90% minority on our transit. The only city outside of Africa or Asia, 90% transit minority. Why? Because the system is racist. No white people, middle-class white people take it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, item—no. I'm sorry. Item 2. Mr. Walsh and Zad Rochelle-Ferfer? Rochelle? So anyway, if John Walsh will come up, please. Let's prepare to—well, let me see if I have this—is it Rachel here? Yes, please come forward.
Hello, my name's Rachel Finfer. I'm the applicant's representative on the case for Elizabeth Peterson Group. We have extensively vetted this project with the community and received full support from the neighborhood council and many community members. The zoning administrator has fully approved and vetted our request and deemed them appropriate, so I would respectfully request you to do as well. Do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, now we will— Okay, we'll go to item number 4. It was called "Special by Mr. Park." Yes, sir.
Mr. Weston, could I make a request? This is a 19-page report, and we just got the committee report this morning. Could we get one more day and continue this till tomorrow, so we can have a chance to at least adequately be able to discuss it?
Okay, now, Chief—I mean, Mr. Parks, we're gonna have a long day, number one, tomorrow. This is just the first phase. They're gonna come back with the—an actual preliminary draft, and at that point in time, we can debate all of that. So you will have an opportunity to make recommendations for changes or what have you, because this is not the final vote.
Okay. I was just wondering, in having a more expanded discussion, whether we have the ability to formulate that draft coming back with more insight. Otherwise, it just seems like they're gonna go with the report, and then we get it kind of like after the fact on a draft ordinance. It doesn't give us an opportunity—because it is a fairly complicated issue.
No, no doubt about that.
So the thing is, if—the issue—I was just looking for one more day, because I just got the committee report a minute ago.
Okay, so let's—I will—I will do the—we can continue that item until tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna go to general public comment for a while. Mr. Walsh. Melrose Larry Green. Good to see you, and your second. Maureen Chris. Ooh, I cannot make out the last name. I apologize. Holakis.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm surprised that Mr. Englander has the huevos to show up here. The second sexual harassment suit against you people up here, and against John S. Lee, his chief deputy. Now, read the actual complaint. The jokes against Jane Doe, who has sued the city and will probably receive probably a couple of million dollars, especially what the media didn't—if you read it—the lesbian jokes that Mr. Lee made about her. The lesbian jokes! What garbage! Mr. Lee should be up here. But wait a second, politically correct, he's an Asian, and Asian-Americans, according to your politically correct religion, can never be charged with sexism against Asian women or other women. Now, who is Jane Doe? We know who she is. We are putting her picture on our website. And she was an Hispanic woman, and incidentally, Mr. Englander said, when she asked him a question, "Oh, you just want to get involved with the fire department, so you can go down there and pose naked in front of the firemen." Now, this is not what I'm saying. This is not what psychotic John Walsh is saying. This is what Jane Doe is saying in her lawsuit, which was filed. I'm telling you right now, do not go into his office without an AIDS test. It's like a gangbang over there. Women are treated like shit. S-H-I-T. That I have under the law. I have a right to use it. Stop treating women like shit, and I won't mention it, Mr. Englander, but the women are treated like garbage in your office. And you sit there with that smirk on your face. Actually, he's left the room. He's back there crying. HollywoodHighlands.org. Shit!
This is public comment period. Mr. Walsh completed his public comment. Now, Mr. Melrose Larry Green. Or—I—replaced—did Mr. Weston call your name?
Yes.
If he called your name before—excuse me, Mr. Green? The young lady was called before. I apologize. It's okay. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Maureen Holakis. I've been a owner of a condominium in South Brentwood since 1998, and I was away for a few years and returned in 2009 to permanently reside there. I've been subject to a number of nuisance issues in my home. One, today, I wanted to bring up to see if the council can consider a law to ban the use of electronic devices. You should have the handout that I circulated. I found this online, types of devices that are used, can be sold on the market. Mind-controlled devices, electronic hypnosis devices, disorientation devices. These devices can hurt human beings, and if the council can consider restricting them or banning their use in multifamily dwellings for the safety and security of our homes, I would like to request that be considered in the council, in the council, so no one is hurt from these devices. The report that I gave you explains a little bit more about what symptoms can arise from the use of these machines. I have been a victim of these devices for almost three years. Because of the force that some of these devices are able to emit, I would like to recommend a law that prohibits their use in multifamily dwellings where it is easy to be under their effect. In my experience, these devices have been used so strongly by neighbors who live above me that a normal person could not stay in the room under which they are used without getting hurt. I have been forced out of bed in the middle of the night. I have been monitored in my dressing closet and the entry of my home by these machines. I have had to flee from my kitchen while cooking when they have been used above my head. I have been hurt by these machines with severe headaches and nausea.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Melrose Larry Green, please. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Well, as—you know, in politics and in show business, sometimes you have to do away with your prepared comments. I just had a great little meeting with my councilman, O'Farrell, and I'm gonna change the original timber of my remarks and the tone of my remarks. As everybody knows, there was a new policy on Hollywood Boulevard to remove the tourist sellers from the Boulevard. And I am a tourist seller, and I clearly am a controversial character in L.A., but I live in the 4th District. The man chair of the meeting is my councilman. I went door-to-door to elect Mitch O'Farrell in the 13th, and even though I'm a pretty right-wing Republican, I went door-to-door for Eric Garcetti. I think he's a great mayor. And it sometimes hurts you—and all my friend Gil Sadio over there, another—I have all friends around here. This horseshoe is all friends. Bernard Parks, everybody. Paul Corretts, Jose Wezar. It's very difficult when you are impacted on a negative situation. I can only give you the word of my company, Open Tours on Hollywood and McAden, that we always have been courteous to the tourists. I know that it's a billion-dollar industry, tourism. I worked at Starline, and I learned to be courteous from working for Starline. I speak many languages, too many. I love working with tourists. I told Mitch that he has my word, that I want to sit down at a later date with the members of the 13th and the 4th, and all of you, in fact, to understand that we will earn a living, we're gonna operate legally, we will do everything the city council says. It's no secret, but the folks, the lady and the women and the men around here, welcome, Councilwoman Martinez, you run the city, and I'm just Melrose Larry Green, and we have to all get along and respect each other. I want to thank you, Mitch. You definitely have my word. My cell number is 213-308-1763. Please, any of you call me at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green, for all your good work. Daniel Jones. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mitch.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. Who here thinks this financial crisis that we're in is gonna be over anytime soon? Anybody? No, this financial crisis is a false positive. The first depression, as worker wages went down, so is their purchasing power. That's totally backwards. What's gonna happen to all these people that own mortgages that are underwater now? When they come back—look, here's how it works. A normal mortgage, over 30 years of appreciated value, has equity that they could borrow against when they—like my father, reverse mortgage. Because this economy was a false positive, been put into play on purpose. Half the mortgage lifetime is negative, and the second half of that mortgage is gonna get right back to net zero. 30 years from now, when the owner of a mortgage comes into a bank, they're gonna have no appreciated value whatsoever. That was put into play on purpose. The banking community took the equity out of the whole mortgage market already, in the form of TARP payments. in the form of TARP payments. Does anybody here want to dispel that general knowledge to your constituents? This mortgage is gonna kill the economy. It's not coming back anytime soon. These people know it, and they're not telling you. Why? They need the time to get out of here. President Bill Clinton ruined the home mortgage and ruined the American dream. The TARP program was nothing more than a Treasury dump. Not a run on the bank, and one from each political party, on purpose. What you don't know is that this is the second attack on our economy. The first was on the savings and loan crisis, started in Orange County.
Completed, Mr. Jones. Ms. Doherty for the last card of the day. Ms. Doherty for public comment. Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you and good mornings, City Council. Thank you for being here and listening to us today. I have, I'm Phyllis Doherty. I have a new article out on opposingviews.com today. I want you to be sure to read it, I'm going to drop it off at your offices. This is about the feral cat program that's proposed for the city. There was recently a supposed negative mitigating impact report released by the Bureau of Engineering for the city. The Bureau of Engineering, being one of the defendants, has now written the city's defense, saying that it is all right to create cat colonies all over the city. I love cats, I hate to see feral cats outside. However, it is not illegal to feed feral cats and take care of them now. We do not need a change in the law. And the main reason for this is to divert money from the pet sterilization plan that has been established many, many years ago by Joel Wax for low-income families, so that that money can be funneled into stripping and neutering stray cats all over the city, which will eat it up. We will then have more feral cats because the low-income families will not be able to spay and neuter their pets. I'm asking you to vote against this when this comes in. Look at it seriously. Look at some of the emails that I published in my article. Mr. Bigheart advised the commissioners and Ms. Barnett to communicate through their private emails so that the information would not be subject to California Public Actions Request. That is just one of the things that is in here. It's important for you to know what's going on behind the scenes and to not give away this precious, these funds that we have for the animals for low-cost income areas and allow them to be diverted into major nonprofits that have their own money coming in through donations. They will tell you they're donating the money, but it's actually just feeding back through their own clinics.
Thank you, Phyllis Doherty. That completes our public comment for this day. And now I wanted to go back to item number 24. Mr. Parks?
Do we have city staff come up?
I do have some cards on this. Want me to take the cards first? Cards first. One card, Mr. Walsh. Number 24, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is very important. This is an item where I agree with the city council. We must protect our cab drivers. My father was a cab driver for about 25 years. He's one of the last of the white cab drivers in the Bronx. The cab drivers are almost entirely minority. One of the major cab owners is an Ethiopian, born in Ethiopia. Many of the drivers are Ethiopian. I startle drivers when I get in a cab by starting to speak to them in fluent Amharic. And I always start with, "Katma kushashan obatam", which means, "This city is very dirty." And they all say, "Al", which means, "Yes". When you, I'm telling the people out here, when you use the internet for getting a cab, you don't know who the hell you're, who's driving. That person could have just murdered his mother. That person could have all sorts of criminal convictions. When you get into a car that is an LA taxi cab, you know that driver's picture is up there, the name is there, the address is there. You are protected. We need Sacramento to increase our protections. Do not trust the internet. I'm telling you right now, you're doing a good job. And you see, they're not even showing up, these, I know it's cheaper to go on the internet and get a drive, get a ride. But it is very, very dangerous and hazardous to your health to trust someone behind the wheel. You're on a bus, you know who the driver is, everybody knows. All other forms of public transit, you know that the driver has been vetted. Not here, not with the internet. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, we're gonna go to number 24, called special again by Mr. Parks. We'll have city staff for time reasons. Come to the center table.
Can we have the city staff? Yeah.
I know, I know. It's my understanding, Mr. Parks, I think we should call on, that there may be an agreement to continue this for a day. And I want to call on the maker of the motion to say if that's the case or not.
Request of the Chair of Transportation to consider this transportation-related issue. We've been asked to delay this one more day.
And that's, and you are okay with that, for now?
Yeah, I think it'll be fine to delay it one day.
Okay, Mr. Parks, we were gonna delay this for a day. Are you comfortable with that?
I just have one question I'd like to resolve. Does that put us in a position not to be able to appeal?
Mr. City, Mr.?
I understand it expires tomorrow.
Mr.?
Mike Nagel for the City Attorney's Office, Deputy City Attorney, General Counsel for the Department of Transportation. We're already beyond that point, anyway. The mayor's already indicated he's going to veto it. He has two days to review it. So we're already going to be beyond the point where we could file an application.
But if we, this motion was to put in on the 11th, if we had acted on it, we would have been able to move it?
If you had moved last week, you would have had time to override the veto, if that was what you, the council contended to do that.
So if we continue tomorrow, we have no point effect? And if I understand it, that if you're not a party, you can't be a part of the appeal?
That's correct. The city is a party, but individual members are not a party to the proceeding. Only the City of Los Angeles, through the Department of Transportation, can file an application for rehearing.
Okay, but if, but again, if tomorrow expires the date and the city is a party, do we still have action that we can go through the appeal? Or do they only address the appeal made by the cab companies?
They'll address the motion for, or application for rehearing for any party to the proceedings who filed the application. I know the taxi industry has filed an application, and the issues would be the same issues that the city would raise.
And then if they file that application and they do a rehearing, do we, as a party, still have the ability to put our point across?
No, we would not be allowed to speak at that particular hearing. Although this is just Phase 1 of the proceedings, they would be, there's an application for rehearing on Phase 1. Phase 2 is going to occur over the next several months.
What is Phase 2?
Phase 2, they've decided that there are other issues. They want to look at the enforcement issues, the PUC, to determine whether they are effective and whether they need to revise the current rules and regulations in Phase 1 to deal with that. I mean, some of the issues, obviously, that are going to come up in Phase 2 is going to be the fingerprinting issue. There are also other issues. They have decided they're going to put over the SEQA issues until Phase 2. And now, I know that will be part of the taxi industry's application because, under SEQA, you do have to do the study, have a waiver or an exemption prior to implementing any type of program. And they haven't done that. They've determined they're going to do that in Phase 2, and I'm not sure legally they can do that.
So your advice is that it's a moot issue, whether we act today or tomorrow?
Based on the timing, I would say that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Coretts?
Well, I would just point out that you are assuming an action by the mayor, which he has not taken yet, so.
Right, that's correct.
And you're also assuming that he has to sign or veto this, which is also a legal fine point that we should be discussing in closed session.
So anyway, the request has been made that this be continued. So let's act on, Mr. Our City Attorney, Dion.
We could discuss that tomorrow regarding the Administrative Code, Section 2.19, and our opinion as to whether it is applicable in this case.
Okay, so then, without objection, we will continue this item until tomorrow. Madam Clerk, what is before this council now?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, and they are referred. What's next?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members? If everyone in the council chambers could please rise for adjourning motions? Okay, I'm looking to Mr. Bloomingfield's side of the aisle. Adjourning motions? Now, I looked on Mr. Parks's side. Adjourning motions? Mr. Labange?
Members, I think we should adjourn in memory of Tom Foley, a great speaker of the United States Congress, who just recently passed. Additionally, I think we should adjourn in memory of Bum Phillips, that great coach, who was a very inspiration to many in the National Football League. And lastly, I'd like to ask Mitchell Farrell, join with me, and Al Sorkin, a Silver Lake resident, a great guy. They hit his wife, leave the ever for the challenge walk for cancer. Longtime Silver Lake resident, he was born in Milwaukee. He received his degree from UCLA, and a master's degree from Cal State LA, and a PhD from Cambridge Graduate School of Psychology. A tremendous guy, and it was a husband and wife. And his wife, Nina, is so inspirational to us all in Silver Lake. Al Sorkin, who recently just passed away, thank you. We adjourned.
And Mr. Labange, you should add to that, I believe it's Bud Adams, owner of the Tennessee Titans, used to be Houston Oilers. And so we would incorporate that in your adjournings as well. Okay, any more adjourning motions? I don't see any. This council meeting is adjourned.